Got to call the East Green Bush Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. Let's rise and do the pledge of allegiance. We have all of our board members here. I want to thank, uh, thank Mr. Alvey and, and the Donald P. Sutherland, uh, uh, community, uh, for welcoming, welcoming us here today. Let's see here. We're, we're going to start off, uh, right with, uh, let's see presentations from, from, from the, uh, for school board recognition, record recognition with Donald P. Sutherland.
Thank you, everyone, and I want to welcome Board of Education, our central administration team, our team here at DPS. Great to see so many high school alumni at DPS. I had to remember everybody's name, uh, but it's great to see everybody here tonight and of course our, our guests. I want to also just take a moment, uh, to thank our PTO, uh, for all they do to support what we're going to talk about a little bit with our recognition as our theme of take a chance, as well as all, all the, uh, the nice treats that they're providing, uh, here this evening. I also want to thank our custodial team, uh, who did a great job setting up as well as, uh, the tech team as well. Uh, I, I appreciate all their support for what I have planned for, for this evening. It's, uh, it's going to be a light presentation, um, and I hope you, you enjoy that. Last year, our character ed team, um, many of, of, uh, of the DPS team are, are here that are on our character ed team. Uh, we started, uh, doing themes. Last year it was growing together. So our whole school focused around that theme. When we hit last spring, we said, the theme is a great, great way to bring our community together. Students, faculty, and families. So we came up with a theme of take a chance. Um, as much as some of us who are older always relate to the Alma song. That's not our, our centerpiece plot. It is integrated into what we will do this year. Actually, um, a couple of members of our team created, uh, student friendly words to the, uh, to the, to the song, uh, Take a Chance by Alma. And our music teachers will be working, uh, with our students on that. So it's really a, a school community, uh, a school community, uh, piece that we, that we have going on. We decided on the theme of take a chance because actually fits nicely into, uh, our, our districts, uh, and you know, what we look at from that graduate, you know, portrait of a graduate. Um, you know, a big part is, is taking risks, right? And, uh, making sure that we're, sometimes we have to step outside our, our comfort zones, um, as adults. Uh, and also, you know, we asked our students to, to, to take, take those risks. I asked our team to take, to take them, to take risks. Um, and you know, those are things that happen as a part of our daily, uh, our lives. And you know, the thing that I think it's important for our students at the end of the day to realize, sometimes when you take, take risks, there are going to be positive outcomes. Right? And, and also there could be negative outcomes, but it's, it's all that learning opportunity and how you can grow first step when you take a chance. So that is our theme of this school year and it really, as we're hitting the month of November and we recognize our, our veterans, all of our schools do. Our theme during November for our character ed programs, courage, right? Who, who, who better than take, than takes a chance in our veterans, right? So it really ties into our character trait of courage, uh, during the month of November and we'll tie it in throughout, throughout the course of, of the school year. So a couple of things that we've been up to here at DPS, uh, we started out at the end of the school year with our annual, we have what's called a bump up day. And it's an opportunity for our students to visit teachers in the next grade level to alleviate some of the anxiousness they may have when they get that, that infamous letter home. And in August, who, who your teacher's going to be, they've already had that, they had that exposure. They worked on an activity together, uh, around our theme of, of taking a, 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 a chance. Uh, this is Shalabudas, our, our teacher. She has built a Google classroom for our, our, our staff where there are activities for each month that integrate our character ed traits as well as, as our theme. This is Reyno, our third grade teacher, all these beautiful t-shirts that, that we say. Uh, she took her, her personal time and created those, uh, for, for our, our staff. Um, I, I would be remiss to not mention, uh, Mrs. O'Connor, who organized our read aloud of, of a book, Take a Chance. Um, and, and also, you know, providing a lot of great resources. Her, this is Maxstad, as we look at our one school, one book. Uh, we do several of them throughout the course of the year. And we did, actually did a recording of, of the book, uh, Take a Chance by, uh, Sujean Graham, several faculty members. Uh, it's, it's nice for our, our students to see, uh, our, our faculty let loose a little. Mary Trust, one of our teaching assistants, her character was the pro and she got right into it. Uh, this is Stacy was our, our main character in the book. So it's really our community of working together. Our character ed team is in the final stages of selecting books for our one school, one book. So we're giving our students the opportunity to vote on these books. So that's what we're going to tie into our, our citizen, uh, citizenship piece. What we're, how we're going to wrap it all up, there's actually a national take a chance day and it's, uh, a Wednesday, April 23rd. And, uh, so we're in the, in our, our beginning stages of planning that and it's going to be an afternoon of enrichment activities. So it'll be facilitated by our team here at DPS, um, where maybe something that you're, that is, uh, you, uh, uh, an adult may have a passion about that they'd like to share with kids from across many grade levels. It'll be based on those opportunities where kids may want to take a chance and try something that they may, that may not be, uh, in their comfort zone. So we're really looking forward to planning that and our PTO will be a great resource in that because, you know, when, when it comes to activities, we, we rely on our PTO to help us, you know, look at some of the different resources that will be needed. So we have a lot going on, uh, with, with our theme and really looking forward to the, to the, our, to our school year. As we celebrate you as board members today, um, and, and recognize you for your volunteerism. You spent countless hours, uh, on behalf of students and faculty, families, and the entire, uh, East Green Bush Central School District community. Through your work, there are ample opportunities where you take a chance and we appreciate that. You step outside your comfort zone. You take chances, uh, that foster innovation and creative thinking. Look at the potential rewards and they result in positive outcomes such as success or new opportunities for our students. And we've seen that over the years with all the innovative programs that, that we've created, your decision makers. It involves making choices that may not have guaranteed outcomes. And we, you, and similar to what we do with our month of November, it's the courage, right? Taking a chance and bravery to make decisions on behalf of our students. So I'm going to ask you to take a chance this evening and I would like to, uh, we, we don't have our students here tonight. Usually we have students, it's Halloween. Right? So, um, we, we thought that, um, we, we are going to have our students involved, but we haven't involved because we're going to play a little bit. I'm going to need my, uh, my, my, my assistant over here. Uh, this is O'Connor. And I am going to invite people off to play. We're going to play some Board of Education Family Feud. So this is going to be the Board of Education West team. There it is. This is our Board of Education East team. I got Mr. Simons joining the team over here. Mr. Keppel joined the team over here.
Oh, you got the buzzer.
Emily, I'm going to need you up here. Catherine, I'm going to need you up here. Let's play Board of Education Junior. All right. Top six answers are on the board. We have seventy-five kindergarten first grade students from DPS. Name a food that you will take a chance and try in our cafeteria.
Uh, first sandwich? That would quite sound like a three cut-off. Talk us out.
No, no. This team got brainstormed. All right, here we go. All right, Michelle, name a food that you will take a chance and try.
And these were kindergarten?
Kindergarten first graders.
Burgers, cheeseburgers, hamburgers, whatever.
Survey says?
Oh, my God.
This is Yuna. Seventy-five kindergarten first graders. They want to take a chance on these foods.
Chicken nuggets.
Three answer, four answer.
All right, team, have you put, have you put together, uh, uh, an answer?
Yeah. French toast sticks.
French toast sticks. All right. So we've got the Board of Ed East will get the points.
What are they now? What are they?
We're going to be able to, let's hit the points on that first. All right, number two. Four. Number three.
Pizza.
One more. Yogurt. That's great. Sandwich. All right, here we go. Let's go to the next round. All right. Michelle and I'm going to need Samantha, come on up. I'm going to say, here we go. Top six answers are on the board. We asked sixty-five fourth and fifth grade DPS students. Name a way that you can take a chance and support a classmate that you may not be familiar with at school. Michelle. Introducing yourself. Survey says?
Uh, sorry, Michelle.
Samantha.
Play with them at recess.
Play with them at recess. Number?
Eating pizza.
Let's play. All right, Sam. Sheriff.
Cherry.
That's oddly specific.
Catherine.
Wait, what about?
Oh, I forgot Mr. Simons. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Name a way that you can take a chance and support a classmate that you may not be familiar with at school. Three seconds.
Help them when they're hurt.
Help them when they're hurt. Go hard, yes. Mr. Bix, Mrs. O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Rod of your heart. One of the two.
Catherine.
Sit with them on the bus.
Sit with them on the bus. There's not one of them.
It's not one.
All right. Let's see, that was, one, two, three. Here we go. Then come over here, still. Name a way that you can take a chance and support a classmate that you may not be familiar with at school. What do we have?
Stopping, stopping bullying or intervening.
Stopping and intervening. All right. Number four. Cheer them on. Number five. Talk with them. And number six. Listen. Here we go. A little more round. We'll take Mr. Yuna. And Shannon, for a little. Almost a little bit strong. Top four answers around the board. We asked one hundred DPS second and third grade students. Name a school subject that you may be challenged with and you will take a chance and look at the hard act. Mr. Yuna, now. You got a flag or pass? We're playing. All right, Mr. Man.
Reading.
Reading. There we go. Mr. Science?
Science.
Science. Catherine?
Writing.
Writing. Michelle?
Writing out subjects. Social studies.
Social studies. No. Got a steal for the big win. Let's see what we have.
You're going to see the one they want.
Absolutely not.
Timer.
Is it art?
Number four.
Can't be recessed.
There we go. Congratulations over here to Board of Education West, our parents.
The West Wing.
So I just wanted to call out by, uh, just, uh, saying thank you to more Board of Education members. On behalf of the DPS school community, our Eastern School District, thank you for taking a chance on all of us. Better the lives of students that, that we all serve together. Uh, please accept the tokens of, of appreciation. Uh, there, there's a gift bag, uh, as well as, uh, a, a, a picture that was created by, uh, our pre-teen students. So, uh, these are, and, uh, for each of you, uh, taking the opportunity to take a chance. There's a, a, a key, a key tag for, for, to take a chance and, uh, the picture from the pre-teen from around the school district. Thank you all so much, uh, for what you do and I'm going to turn the meeting back over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvey. That was tons of fun.
And, and thank you because we took, we stepped out of our comfort zone. At least I did to do that.
Right? All right, um. So I always wonder at these moments what to say, um, you know, and, and I think it's appropriate to, 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 to re, uh, you know, express gratitude, um, you know, for, for, for the culture that you provide, um, for the kids. Um, you know, it really shows, you know, the fun that I had here, sitting here amongst, you know, our, our colleagues and, and to see the culture and how you bring the mindset of portrait of a graduate and kind of, and co, and co-cate that inside the community of our educators, inside the kids, um, you know, it's really a pleasure and, and thank you for having us again. Um, moving on to approval of, of the draft minutes for October ninth, twenty twenty-four. See here. Don't have a record with me of. See here. I don't know.
Jane, do you know who was absent on October ninth?
I was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, a motion to approve the draft minutes. Ms. Van Orton, uh, second. Ms. Kimerzky, all in favor? Everyone's in favor. Not everyone, but any, any abstaining? And Samantha's abstaining, um, and no one knows. Everyone else wants to guess. Motion passes. Uh, moving on to approval of the draft minutes for October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve? There's O'Brien. Is there a second? Ms. Turner, all in favor? Everyone, but Sam is in favor and all abstaining. Samantha's abstaining. Motion passes. And we're going to open up the board forum and I'm going to start on my left with Ms. Van Orton.
I just want to say thank you for having us out here. I have never actually gotten the chance to be inside this building before, so that is really fantastic. But, um, during, uh, the twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year, one of my children, um, had the opportunity to remote learning with one of the teachers here and with your librarian. It's like, it's nice to actually meet you and have to see you on a computer screen. And it was an absolutely fantastic experience. So I just want to say thank you for that, even though we work physically in the building, we do still kind of feel like we're part of the DPS community in a way.
I, I also want to just thank you for all your efforts and it's such an enjoyable visit all the time when we come out here. So thank you very much. Um, wanted to, uh, recognize and applaud and, and wish all the athletes that are going sectionals this week, um, good luck. I know, I believe there's some games today and there's games for the weekend. So good luck all. And I did want to just do a little bit of shout out. If anybody has not seen the, uh, video that, uh, Janay posted, um, last week, um, by all the administrators' facilities and the, um, support staff over there, take a couple of minutes to take a look at it and it's really enjoyable and it just shows how much caring and love and support that each of you are giving to our students and we thank you very much for it.
Mr. Bix.
No, I echo everything and thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Ellie. Thank you, DPS. Uh, you're the farthest out, but you never forgot. Really, really appreciate everything that you do, especially this time of year and, and just looking around and seeing all the things that the kids do phenomenally. I don't see any go Yankee flags, but that's okay. Maybe some Red Sox ones, right? But that's okay. Uh, but no, really. Thank you. Thank your, your staff, your kids and really appreciate everything. Thank you.
I'm going to echo those thoughts and Ms. Turner.
I just want to say thanks for the game. That was a lot of fun. Um, learned some things about kids and what they're a little bit scared of doing. And also thank you for the gifts. Very nice.
Um, echoing everybody, it's always great to come to DPS. I do miss seeing the kids, but I think the family feud made up for it. So thank you very much for that. Um, and I know boys soccer, I believe, is playing right now in sectional. So, you know, again, good luck to all of our student athletes. Um, and then I just wanted to recognize a loss for the community with, um, Mrs. Willis, Carol Willis, who was a reading specialist. Um, grew up in the same neighborhood, was childhood friends with her. So my sympathy to the whole school community as well as her family.
Nothing done. Just thank you so much for having us.
Thank you for having us. This was really fun. Um, I love board games and games in general, so this was so close to my heart. Um, thank you. And, um, also, um, just want to recognize a couple, um, events, uh, I've been to recently. Um, the trunk or treat at Janay was really, really fun. Um, and there was a great turnout. And also tonight was, uh, the trunk or treat at the bus garage. And, uh, we got to walk over with my family, saw a lot of neighborhood kids and it was really, really cool. Um, and, uh, uh, Dr. McQueen was a, a pink lady. So that was um, no, but it was fun and it's such a fun time of year. And, um, I just think that this community is, is a great one and really rallies around the kids all different ways and it's, it's wonderful. So thanks.
And moving on to our public forum, um, is there any comments or comments from the community? All right. And moving on to discussion items with our Howard Golf Middle School Principal search.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Temple. Uh, as everyone here knows, Mr. McHugh has done an extraordinary job as the golf middle school interim, interim principal for the last two years and, um, uh, terrific job in building a very positive culture and of support for the students or the staff and really positive interactions with the community. We thank Mr. McHugh for his service. Uh, however, we do need to, um, move into a process to make sure that we can hire a probationary principal, uh, for the school. It is not likely that New York State will, uh, approve again a waiver of the earnings cap for public employees that work in schools. And so Mr. McHugh is aware of that. And, um, again, we thank him for his services, continued work at golf and the many things that he's done for the district. So we wanted to share with the board, uh, the advertisement for the position that we're hoping to get feedback on this evening and to post tomorrow uh, for a period until November thirtieth. Uh, the salary range is set by the East Green Bush Administrators Association contract. Uh, we list that as well as it is a twelve-month administrative position. There's a description of the middle school concept that is in place in terms of the way that the school is organized around smaller schools, whether the school, the house concept and the teaming structure, which has been very positive both for the academic development of the students, but also for their socio-emotional development and their connection with the teachers and with other students. In accordance with New York State requirements, we're requiring that the individual candidates be considered, need to have either school building leader certificate, school administrator certificate, or school district administrator certificate. Three to five years experience as an administrator, preferably experienced as a building principal. However, we would consider other types of administrative experience. Uh, preferred prior success as a leader of a middle school, but not required. ability to facilitate future-driven educational vision, working with the staff, collaborating, developing consensus among the staff, students, and parents. Working and engaging the community, including families and local businesses. Be a part of a strong administrative team, student-centered, people-oriented, and inspiring excellence with everyone within the school. Excellent communicator with good listening skills and leadership, uh, leadership model built on trust, integrity, and honesty. So, uh, we tried to capture as much specifics as we could about the position. We're working for input on that as well as the timeline. Russ is going to go through the timeline for the posting as well as the process that we want to use to select a candidate.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Um, so we'd like the posting period to be November first, twenty twenty-four through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, we would be posting on our district website, recruit front, OLAS, LinkedIn, um, Senes, which is the School Administrators Association, NISCUS, indeed, the Times Union, and then we would like to post, um, our advertisement in local, um, newspapers across the state of New York, um, including Buffalo, um, Rochester, Poughkeepsie, Syracuse, um, and Westchester County. Um, the review of applications would occur once the posting closes. Um, and the goal date for that would be, um, December third for the review. Uh, we would like to establish an interview committee no later than December sixth, with the first round of interviews being conducted the week of December sixteenth. Final interviews and reference checks being conducted the week of January sixth, twenty twenty-five. Um, with a recommendation of hire to the Board of Education on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five and an anticipated start date for the new principal of Howard Algoff Middle School of July one, twenty twenty-five.
So if board members have any questions or comments about timeline or about the job description, you know, we welcome your comments. We'll revise these documents based on any feedback that we get this evening and hopefully post it tomorrow. Friday, excuse me, Friday.
No comments. Um, I'd prefer you to start us tab. So you're going to establish the, the interview committee sooner. Really, you're not going to wait.
No, we're not going to wait.
Okay. I mean, I think, is there contractual requirements for the committee?
Um, there are contractual requirements with our East Green Bush Teachers Association. For the principal.
Okay. Do we want any board representation on that?
We would like one board member on the committee.
So we can talk about that.
I think Jesse is already.
If the candidate, um, is available prior to July first, what are your thoughts on that? Cause I think that if someone gets released for the thirty-day notice contractually.
Ideally, that would be the best case scenario because we would like the individual to work within the school with Mr. McHugh and the assistant principals.
Yeah.
Um, we have talked about some options to We have talked about some options to support the new person if they came after July one. Difficulty is the earnings cap may not enable us to have Mr. McHugh for a very long period of time, if at all. So the idea of having somebody who could possibly start early would be good. It'd be a little extra expense to it. Because you'd be saying two individuals, but it would be worth the investment.
And then you mentioned the EGT being involved. Is the principal unit involved?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And how many representatives do they have?
Usually, we work with our Administrators Association to have two representatives.
The EGT.
In the EGTI, we have three now.
Three.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Avoca.
So three, two, one, nine, outside people. Any committee members?
We have in the past involved parents and community members, and I think that probably something that we would do.
I just had a question, Marissa. When it's posted on OLS, would it be available for all the regions? I know it's kind of divided, so it would cover basically the whole state.
Yeah, so OLS reaches any, any and all candidates across the state of New York. And then individuals also, if they're not in the state, they can still access OLS, and you are posting there as well.
I do have a question about the time. I'm just wondering if if after a review of the candidates and let's say all parties think that maybe additional, like, rounds of interviewing and posting was necessary. I'm just wondering, how would that play into or impact like the timeline or how is that baked into the process?
Yeah, so we are starting early enough where if we review our applicants and we determine that we need to extend the posting, we would be in good shape at that point to do so.
We also keep the process a little fluid in terms of if we do an initial interview, and there's, you know, two or three candidates that need to be moved forward to a second round. We always do a second round, and we always do a final round with myself. They have as many as three rounds in some cases, depending on the candidates and the consensus of the committee.
I just, an additional question about where we're advertising. I'm not noticing any newspapers up north. I don't, I don't know what's available up there, but do we ever advertise specifically in the North Country, Plattsburgh area at all?
I know there is one, there is a newspaper up in Plattsburgh.
And I'm also wondering about Berkshire County in Massachusetts, because I know when I was teaching, I commuted between. So I don't know if there's maybe anyone out there.
We can definitely post in Berkshire, in the North Country. That's no problem.
You may have people in Massachusetts that are New York State certified. Suggestions. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question before I move on. It says responsibilities, and it says it's on the district website. Obviously, nothing is on the website right now. So are you still drafting those responsibilities, or is that something?
The job description, I can provide to Mr. Simons, and Mr. Simons can share that out with all of the job responsibilities.
The job description is get, does get posted on the website.
It does.
Thank you. All right. So moving on to the board email listserv. Miss Steinbach, did you want to?
Sure, I'll pick us off on this. I wanted to bring this to the board to talk about our listserv, the Board of Education. If folks aren't familiar, have a listserv and one email address, BOE at East Green Bush, you know, dot dot org. So I think that there's some confusion as to who actually gets those emails. And when the public is sending an email to that address, it doesn't state who actually receives it. It's on the page that identifies the board members, but the listserv includes additional folks that are part of the district. And so I think as a form of transparency and good practice, we have to state who is on that listserv publicly on the website, so folks understand who the emails are going to. And then also, as a streamlining process, I am asking or would propose that we have a board, a Board of Education email that goes to Board of Education members and the superintendent, and then any additional folks that are employed by the district would fall off of that listserv. And that, to me, is just a way of streamlining and understanding communications between the public and, and the Board of Education. If folks want to keep everyone on the listserv, then I would recommend regardless that or irregardless of that, that a full list of who is getting the email address when the email is sent. So, so everyone's aware.
I like the idea of the listing, because I think that, you know, in the interest of transparency and communication, that the district admin should have some context of what issues are out there for the community. I like the idea of at least listing it so people know. I think that one of the things that we've done years ago is that we didn't have that. And really, the responses that have to come from, really have come from board president in the past. And we made sure that that listserv was open and that people could communicate with us. We would all be aware. And the issues would be present to the admin as well. And then as long as they know that, I think that's, that's a great idea.
Yeah. I think I fully support a listserv. I, I'm huge fan of them. You know, professionally, and I just always, I think it's good practice to always know who is getting the email and what you send. And my own personal opinion, obviously, it's my own, is that the Board of Education is made up of us and, you know, and then we have our superintendent. I would argue it's the superintendent's responsibility to inform admin any concerns that are brought to the district or that need to be talked about at the board level. I don't necessarily think that admin staff should be getting every email that goes to the Board of Education. And clearly, that's my opinion, but I'm happy, you know, to have that discussion.
I mean, I do think it's a bit misleading. It's called the Board of, you know, Board of Education. So I, you know, I, maybe we need to change it.
Sure.
And change the title of it, and that may be better, but I can see, you know, people not understanding who it's going to simply because it just says Board of Education.
And it's on our, it's on the page where it has our bios and what's.
So I'm hearing a couple of different, and I just want to ask a couple of questions, like to make sure that I'm understanding this clearly. So the primary thing that I'm hearing is, is that there's a transparency question when the email goes to BOE. You know, we're wondering, is what I'm hearing. Is everyone aware that it goes to more than just Board of Education members? I'm also hearing from Mr. Buno that, right, there, there's a need for the governance team to be all on the same page and be aware of all the challenges that comes before the board. So the, the Board of Education operating through the administrative team needs their awareness. And I think that, what I'm hearing this time back from you is, is, you know, you're wondering what issues may or may not be appropriate for the board specifically to receive. Like, like, so, so I'm hearing questions around like, like that piece of it, that there might be more to. So I'm just trying to just, you know, make sure I'm understanding all the issues well.
So, so my point is not who on the board is getting it. The board should be getting it. It's the additional folks who report to the superintendent.
Okay.
If someone emails the Board of Education, it's a matter of which they want to bring the board's attention to, arguably, right, the superintendent as well. And whether it is appropriate or not, that, you know, different, different folks who work in an admin, you know, have, have that. If it's an issue that should be brought to the attention, that district, other district staff should know about. I, I would, I empower our superintendent to be having those discussions with the staff. I don't necessarily think that every email that goes through the Board of Education is going to our full, our full Board of Education plus admin staff.
Isn't efficiency to that, though, that helps us to be able to be as responsive as we need to be when an email comes to the board and me and the central office administrators. You know, if it's a finance issue, then Ms. Mulligan and I have a conversation about it. It's a curriculum issue, Mr. Styles and I have to HR issue, Marissa and I talk about it, but we work collaboratively as a team. I see the point, and I agree with the point about letting people know who it goes to, but from, from a matter of responsiveness and our, our approach to team responsiveness, it's helpful to me to have everybody on there. That doesn't mean that I can't take the extra step to go see one of them and talk to them about what's going on. If it, if it pertains to them, it's just, it's a, it's a way we work collaboratively as a team in the central administration, and it's helpful to us. I think if people know that it's going to the team, I think that's great. I think that's a really good point. But I, I, I don't see any issue that would come before through the board email that wouldn't cause me to look at it and say, okay, this is an HR issue, this is a curriculum issue, I need to pull my team together and review this, because there's different pieces to this email. I want to be as responsive as possible.
And I. Be transparent, like Emily said, like said, that just list who gets the the following recipients received. Based on this case, it goes to the following recipients.
I, I think also in the issue of efficiency, that if for some reason Jeff is not available, if he is out of the office or something, it would quickly go to whoever is acting in his stead rather than us needing to take that extra step to get it there. But I, I agree that we should be transparent and we should list it, but I do, I do think if it's a team and collaborative effort, then to include those other members, to me, makes sense.
And I, oh, sorry. I, I really would propose changing, because the Board of Education is, is somewhat misleading. I think we should consider changing it at least. I don't want it to be forever, like Board of Administration and. Yeah, but it just, you know.
A new email address. Because it's easy, it's, it's helpful to us. It's an efficiency for me to type in BOE instead of all of our names. So you can keep the BOE one, and then you can make one that is BOE plus admin or whatever you want. I, I don't want to get rid of it entirely. I feel like it's, it's helpful to be able to quickly email everyone.
I, I do want to add, like, and I just don't want to lose the point that Mr. Simons was really emphasizing the, the team concept. And I think it's very important to kind of really, like, you know, and I totally, I also get the, the idea that, like, you know, I had a recent mishap, not, not to say what it's about, where I was under the impression that I was emailing solely board members. And it was, you know, it was, didn't have nothing, you know, but in any event, it was a confusion, you know, that is. So if I'm confused, I'm imagining it's easy for others to be confused. You know, but I just, I just think it's important that, you know, that, that we kind of retain the team characteristics, you know, I would hope, you know, that we're not interested in having too much conversation without the admin and that we really, you know, have them as a primary part of the conversations we're having. So that's kind of where, where, where I'm at with it. And I'm not sure if, you know, there's interest beyond, you know, to have more conversations without them. So that, that's, yeah.
I, I think we need to, I mean, I think there's looking at it from the efficiency of the administration. I think there's also looking at it from the public's point of view. And I guess the question is, how does the public get in touch with people if they do have concerns? And so I think that's the issue that we need to really think about. There may be issues that need to come to a Board of Ed email that don't, that a member of the public maybe does not want to share broadly. And so then what is the communication for that? And I think we need to then, this gets a little more complicated, because then we need to spell that out on the website.
I would caution against this, a board direct communication from the public. I just think that is, it's not as transparent. It, it brings up issues that are separating the board and the governance team. And in my experience in the last eleven years, I've never had an issue that I couldn't share with the admin or their other board members from the public. If they want to email us, listen, they Facebook, they Twitter, they do everything else. The email should be shared with everybody. That's my.
Now, I, I want to ask a question. So, so I think you're saying that, right, that let's say, for example, you know, you know, you know, forbid that something, that administrator was involved in the incident that needed to be communicated specifically. So, so you're saying, like, for those rare instances, there needs to be a protocol as what? So I think, I think, Mr. Bino, what I'm hearing from you is that you're concerned about it becoming like the Wild West of, you know, direct-to-board communications. Yeah.
Continuity of what we're trying to do here, transparency.
Yep.
Communication. I understand the need to communicate from the outsider perspective to an individual if there's an issue. But I think in that case, you know, most of our emails are pretty well broadly out there. I suggest that if it comes in, it goes to the board president. That person can reach out and they can, they can handle it.
And a response should not be coming directly from a single board member. The president sends a general response, and then whatever the topic is or the concern should be discussed amongst the entire board. Because it's, it's a board issue, and anything that's discussed in front of the board, everybody's sitting here usually here. So if you want to be transparent and put a listserv out there, this is who gets it. You know, in, in, you know, short of the past couple of months, we don't get a whole lot of direct emails that are problematic.
Okay. I'm wondering if we might need more conversation around this, or if, if we're ready, like, like, Ms. Steinbach, Ms. Phillips, like, how are you feeling about, about this at this point in time? Like, I'm just wondering, like, you know, we, we, you know, I don't want to drag, you know, the email listserv out.
Well, I think I clearly feel passionate about it enough to put it on as an agenda item.
I think it was a great idea.
Yeah. You know, I, I feel like it's, it's formal practice, you know, to state that. And so I think we all agree that we should state who is a member of the Board of Education now, so the public understands. I mean, that's, that's the minimum we should be doing. I do think that I, I have a difference of opinion. We all don't have to agree. I think that the Board of Education, our members, superintendent, should have a way to communicate. And that's if we type out individually, if I have to type out individual emails, or if we don't feel that the public should be able to reach us exclusively, then we can vote on that, and that will be what it will be.
Okay.
And, and I just want to make sure I'm okay with disclosing, disclosing it, but it has to be out there. You know, putting it on a website, you know, it's, it's not clear. We need to make sure we're transparent with the public as well of who's getting that.
So I'll bring back this concern to Mark Adam and Peter Goodwin and see what we can reduce regarding a making it very clear on the website who receives the current emails that are sent to the current BOE address. And then perhaps we can have more discussion or thought. I'd like to give some more thought to the issue of segregating it out into two emails. In terms of confidentiality issue that.
And I agree, I mean, I agree that we should continue the conversation of governance and communication, like you said, Samantha. I totally agree with that. I think this first step is important. And then secondly, I think we have to discuss internally what we want to do in terms of our communications and when we get those kind of issues.
And in terms of Mark working on, you know, getting this posted on the website and with Peter, would he communicate it through Parents Square and all the other avenues as well?
Yes. We'll, we'll create a draft plan to do that. We'll share it with you before we roll.
I think if we're going to make any changes or do that, I think we were recently at a conference for School Board Association, and a great, a great resource that another district has done, which, you know, I think we would be wise to adopt at this point, who to call. And it's this infographic, right, about if you have a problem with this, it's like, where, where do parents or where does the community reach out? Who should they talk to, in what order? And I think that that's really helpful, especially with folks new to the district, right? My son was entering kindergarten, and I was kind of figuring things out as well, like nothing to do with being a board member, but I think any ways that we can help the public. And also, we want to encourage communication, and I guess I look at it a little differently, like, I don't, I want to hear from people. I want people to use a Board of Education email. Wouldn't it be awesome if we got like, hey, I went to this event and it's great, or thank you so much for this? Or, I mean, I personally would love more emails to the BOE inbox. And so maybe if there's a way to think about how we're changing the narrative in which we talk about our communication. I think it's really crucial, and the more we hear, the more we listen, the better we will be. And I'm not, you know, ever for excluding folks at the table. That's never my intention. I want to be transparent and also foster the communication that the public deserves. And so that's my intention, you know, and bringing this communication forward. And so that's my intention, you know, and bringing this communication forward and, you know, I can talk offline, show you the example of the resource that another district had. But fostering communication and giving people clear channels, um, really we are elected officials and it's our job to listen. And, um, those who are elected, you know, need to be able to have clear channels on how to hear from folks. That's my own personal opinion. There is obviously a chain of command which we all respect and follow. And we ask the public to respect and follow that. But besides that, I welcome any and all communication.
Yeah. And I think just to clarify, I mean, the Board of Ed, there are nine elected mem- voting members, but there's 10 members, right?
Correct.
So I think that's even some clarification, like when we say meet the board, we probably should have, add you, Jeff. I think that's important to, that everybody knows that there is that connectivity between the superintendent and the board. I'm not saying you don't get the emails. I think it's more about like the, whether, you know, yeah, you're just, you pass it on to the right person. And I get the continuity piece. I think that's a great example, but I think we should be really clear to the public that it's actually a 10-member board. And that the super, that there is that connectivity between the board and the superintendent.
I just want to say too, though, Mark and I's lived experiences in the past are kind of informing some of the things here from a legal perspective. And I think that's kind of the context I'm coming from. I support exactly what you said, Emily.
Yeah.
One of the goals of our board years ago was for transparency and openness to the community. And to bring that and encourage that, unfortunately, there's people who use it for nefarious purposes and other purposes that are, uh, unfortunately not in the best interest of the district. The people that work here and, you know, those communications get there too. So, um, it's kind of like a double edged sword in some ways. But I agree about communication and the importance of it.
And I think like when we're reviewing, we have a subcommittee reviewing board practices, policies. Uh, I think this should be clearly defined when, you know, we have people joining the board and what, what do we do with emails? When you get a button email, like, do we respond? Who's responding this and that? And so we can build that in and we can build the guardrails in the framework. Um, you know, I think that that's really important, right? We don't want to put ourselves at undue risk. Um, but we also, I feel like we have to charge ourselves to not, not be overly cautious because we're, we're worried, you know?
We used to have our cell phones on there.
By no way am I putting that.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Buno, is there, Ms. O'Brien, all in favor? Everyone is in favor. Motion passes. Um, moving on to the, uh, Capital Area School Development Association CASDA. Um, proposal for athletic program. Are there any questions or comments on the proposal? Ms. Phillips?
I think this is great. I think it's the dir- like the direction we want to head. I wondered if in the scope of work, if, um. Whomever will be the administration's kind of interface with us and kind of overseeing that. If, if they feel comfortable on exactly what the deliverables are, because I think in some cases, it's, there will be a, um. You know, like, is it a, are we getting a plan at the end or we talk about process and procedures? And then in other cases, we say create a handbook for processes and procedures or, so I just, um, I just wanted to be clear, like. Whoever's going to own this, in the scope of work, if they're crystal clear on what the end state is from that scope of work and what we expect to get. Hard copy on, at the end of this. But I think it's a great, a great direction.
So, thank you for the question. Um, I met directly with, um, the CASDA director. Uh, Tim Beckus, as well as the consultant who will be doing this, Rob Stulmaker of us Friday. I contributed to the scope of work, uh, and one of the things we added. In light of your question was a need for an update preliminary written report. So in February, by the end of the month, you'll get a preliminary report of the work that has been done. And some of the findings and some of the recommendations. At that time, there'll be an evaluation that would include the board as to, um. You know, recommendation of next steps and, you know, the things that will have to be done. As part of the review with a final report coming at some period to be determined. So, um, the, the conversation was really. Uh, given the consultant an opportunity to work with the athletic director, look at some of the, uh. Hiring issues as well as the procedures, also the evaluation issues. Uh, gather some information, make some suggestions and recommendations that could be implemented. But also a check in with the board and the administration to see where we're at by the end of February. And then possibly proceed more with a, you'll, you get a, you get a recommendation, uh, report. A complete final draft at the end of the process, which is trying to determine when that will happen. We don't know yet until they actually get into the work. And it will be, in the past, when CASDA has done studies, they present a report, um, for the Board of Education. And sometimes they come and they make a public, uh, presentation of it. Sometimes they just provide the written report. So when we did a. Study of our elementary attendance zones several years ago, they gave us a written report and they presented that in a board meeting. They did a study of our HR, uh, administration. When we moved from an assistant superintendent to, to a director, they did a report. And they did also another one on UPTA.
Yep.
So you'll get a, you'll get a report. It may be in a draft form initially and then, um. Added to as we, as we proceed forward, depending on what, uh, findings and recommendations occur by February.
So I have this nebulous liaison, the athletic program role. Is there any role for me in this process? Do you want me to have a role?
Uh, if you're volunteering, uh, I think that, I think that you could perhaps. Engage with me and the athletic director with the consultant.
Is that acceptable with the board?
Uh, the board's perspective on it?
Yeah, I think that would be great. And just sort of a follow up, um, just on the scope of work, again, if. Thank you for volunteering.
I have a rolling.
Yeah, I mean, I think also just like in the future, if we want to say like, you know, draft report by a certain date. And then just make sure that we have enough money on the backend if, like to, if we see that we need a lot of additional work that we haven't spent. The budget in the, the draft phase and can make some corrections. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we need a motion to approve.
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve this? Ms. Steinbeck, is there a second? Ms. Skomerski? In favor? In favor, you're got to raise.
So next steps, I will be in contact with CASDA and the, Mr. Stulmaker will start working together.
That's great. Completely unrelated, since you mentioned that they've done some other surveys or other work, like pre-K, could we share, could we see this?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And moving on to, uh, committee reports, uh, Mr. Simons on the Ad-Hoc Board Operating Procedures Committee. Um, Community Engagement, Strategic Planning Committee and Onboarding New Members Committee.
Okay. When I talk about this, I'm going to invite board members around the committee to give their perspective and their update on this. We've formed some board, uh, ad hoc committees, ad hoc meaning they're temporary, to address specific things. They're not fixed or standing committees. We had a really productive retreat back in September and some of the things that we looked at were board operating procedures. Uh, how do we set goals and strategically plan with more community input and engagement? And also, uh, hearing the perspective of our new board members, what can we do better to onboard and orient new board members? So we've gone forward with, uh, three meetings so far. Uh, the operating procedures committee is still working on three areas. We are talking about shared norms for board participation. Also ways to coordinate, uh, participation at school events by board members. And also looking at a general framework for decision-making that can be applied in different situations, particularly as you deal with more complex. Decisions. We're still having discussions of what those, uh, operating procedures would look like. Uh, and we're hoping to have more information at the November 6th board meeting at this point. I'll ask, uh, any of the committee members who've been, uh, part of that committee, if they want to add anything. I think it was Emily. And Jen, because you're on that committee and, yeah.
I think that pretty much sums it up.
Yeah. I, I would just say, like, I, I know one of our things is, I think, across all of our committees, like community engagement, board operating procedures. We're really trying to make a focus to get more in touch with our stakeholders, understanding what their concerns is, what their wants is. You know, how are they responding to what we say or how we implement? Um, and I think we kind of want that to inform across everything.
The Community Engagement Strategic Planning Group, uh, the board had talked about, uh, establishing some short-term goals for this year. But also some long-range goals and having within our strategic planning process, a, uh, more formal and extensive. Way of engaging the community in that process. Uh, the consensus of the committee is that we should, uh, look at what outside resources might be available to conduct that survey. Uh, we identified a few of them, uh, that we're going to talk about at our next meeting, including, uh. A, uh, tools such as K-12 Insight, which is a product, uh, and a service that can be utilized. Also looked at possibility of using Thought Exchange, which we've used in the past. And I shared with the committee a very, uh, comprehensive strategic planning process that is used in another school district. By the Brighton Central School District in Western New York and their superintendent. Who also, uh, provides consulting and work in implementing that process has agreed to come to our next meeting. And we're still trying to determine the, so I thought it was a good meeting and that, and it's Jennifer.
Yeah.
And. Michelle and Emily and Kim.
Yeah, yeah. I thought we had a good discussion. The only thing I would add, Jeff, is we were talking about kind of how to, um, shape the community, right? Or how to define it. And we're looking at this point, you know, beyond just the school district, students and teachers and families. But the broader community, business resources, um. Town, all of those resources. And because we encompass several different towns and villages, reaching out to all of those, which would be part of the survey, I'm assuming.
And, and just to comment that the survey, we're going to take a little bit of time to put that survey together to make sure that we're really, you know, getting to what we want to ask. Exactly. And the right population. So it's not something that we're going to rush through. It's going to be a little bit of time. So if the community understands that, that's appreciated.
Okay.
Yeah, I think like, you know, this is really in the vein of, um, you know, strategic planning and looking at what are the, going to be the goals of the district. For a longer period of time. And I think anytime you're gonna, you're gonna do that, we have to start at a place where we first can hear from folks in the community. Um, to, to make informed decisions on, you know, any strategic direction that we're looking to go in. And so, um, by nature of that, uh, that process is a very long one. However, um, if we do it correct, if we engage in the right ways, if we hear from the, all the people, um, we want to hear from. Then when we make our strategic plan and we think about where do we want to be in five years, however, X amount of years. Um, you know, the, the board will be, um, way more informed. And, uh, you know, you're already starting, um, you know, you're buying at that point and hearing from folks. And so, um, you know, I think that this is, uh, a committee that is definitely well-needed. And I think it's a long-term approach, um, you know, for us. So.
And I, I just have a question. I think I saw this in the notes. Um, a group I'm particularly interested in hearing from are those who live within confines of the district. But are choosing to send their students to private schools or are choosing to home school? Because I would like to hear their feedback about why they are making those choices. Um, so I just want to be sure that we are considering them. And how do we target, um, getting, hearing those voices? Because I think they may have some very valuable input that we should be considering.
Really good point. It's a really good idea.
I did not have that listed.
At the, uh, school boards conference, just want to mention it kind of ties into this topic too. I saw a good presentation from Saratoga City School, online board governance. I mentioned to Jeff. Uh, so kind of Mike, uh.
Mike Patton.
Mike Patton, a very experienced board, interesting processes, talked about long range, short range, some of the documentation they use. Really good powerful presentation. I think they were very open to sharing some of the stuff. It's right up the road in Saratoga. And I think it was really worth exploring and talking to Mike about.
I was at that session too and I felt like it was very worthwhile.
All right. Moving on to tabled motions. Any tabled motions? No tabled motions? How about old business?
We left off a committee, Jesse, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We didn't talk about the onboarding of new board members. Um, it was a really good perspective that we heard from our. Board members, Kim and Catherine, that were there and, um, some of the things they thought we could do. Do a little bit more before the, uh, organizational meeting to discuss some of the things that are typically on the organizational meeting that. Uh, you might be familiar with, but new board members would not be, some of the resolutions that are passed and those kinds of items. Uh, bringing the board, newer board members up to speed on some of the historical. Uh, information that they may not have regarding certain issues that are in front of the board, in front of the district at this point. Um, also, um. Providing more information on what to anticipate regarding the budget process, maybe a little bit more in advance. It was said that the, uh, New York State School Board, uh, fiscal training does a good job of outlining some of the responsibilities of the board. But what does that budgeting process look like within the district? Uh, and what to anticipate. And actually I've talked to Jen. Jen had to be excused. She was feeling.
Oh, okay.
So, um, um, I talked to Jen and we're reviewing some information on the budget calendar and doing. Uh, we're providing a little bit more than what we have in the past, um, when we talk about the budget process. And there was one other thing that was, um, shared, which was, um. Just making, just making sure that, uh, you know, there's, there's really a, uh, process to, um. Voice in. How do, how do, how do board members, new board members voice in and contribute to the process, whether that be a question or an idea? The other piece to that, I think, is also the, the format of our agenda. What, what do these items mean? What comes up at discussion items? What typically is, uh, board forum? Explaining that a little bit more and making sure that we're all working from a common definition of what these topics headings are about. And I think that might also. Give avenues for board members to voice in such as that new business. Anybody can bring up anything, any business, anybody can bring up anything they want at board forum. And anybody can request, let's, we put this out as a discussion item for the next board meeting and maybe more conversation about how that process works.
I, I did just want to, want to add to, uh, I think you touched on it. Um, they, um, the new board members did, did mention how the training. Before starting board service was very helpful. Um, and I know that was new this year. Ms. Ms. Steinbach really championed that, that, that call a lot. Uh, but no, very, very glad that that worked well. Yeah, absolutely.
And as the, as part of the budget process, um, can that include sort of a deeper dive on foundation aid? I did, that was an interesting session at the conference too. And I think there's a lot to just get read up on.
Jennifer and I have talked about, we actually talked about it yesterday, uh, bringing in, uh, the Questar State Aid Planning. Uh, representative to co-present some information with Jennifer about that, about our budget obligations legally. And also about the.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be really.
Mike Ross.
Yeah, I think one thing too, and because I work here, uh, they have a lot of videos and tutorials that they send out to the, the different business officials that are available. Uh, they do table talks, most sorts of good resources if you want to kind of get a foundation before they come in, in the timing to do that. But I think that we can try to get some links to people too about some basics and. They're good people.
Sorry, I just have two quick things to add. Um, the initial conversations, I remember us talking about, um, you know, a mentor, mentee. Or kind of like you're getting paired with a new board member. If, if, if a more seasoned one has capacity to do that. Kind of like, you know, a soft, uh, you know, reaching out and saying, hey, here for any questions. And, um, you know, and I would, uh, would like to commit us to also having in there that the president. Be reaching out, um, to any new members, uh, introducing themselves, um, and being available resource. Perhaps they, if we do the mentor route or the pair, um, perhaps that could be that link there. But I would like to, um, commit us to, you know, certain, certain things and hold ourselves accountable. And so if we could work that into that, I would appreciate it. Um. The other, the other, um, thing I was thinking about and I was hearing a lot about, um, asking some other districts. Um, some of them have, uh, for new board members, the board does like, kind of like a meet or greet or some kind of session. Before they show up on that first day when they're sworn in and then immediately voting on issues. And I think it's like that sometimes it's the first time that people are meeting. And I think, um, perhaps if it was board, um, I don't know exactly what other districts do. It seemed, I asked a few folks at other, at the conference and it seemed to vary, but it seemed like they had some sort of like meeting. Um, or, you know, some kind of session where that happened. So, um, I don't know all the legalities around that, making it open. Open meeting law or whatever that entails, but. But um perhaps if we're willing, if we think that that's of value, thinking about something like that.
Miss Steinbach, I just want to just clarify, like when you say like um the president reaching out, are you saying like separates? Cause I I I, we we did sit down with the new board members. Are you saying like something preceding? I'm just, I'm wondering if you're thinking something different than.
Cause you reached out and you like, you know, made yourself available and like that is great. Um, but I want to us to write that down and formally commit to that to hold ourselves accountable. Next year, five years from now, seven years from now, I don't know where you're going to be. I don't know where I'll be. Setting that precedent that like this, these are the things that we've noticed that matter in the trends and committing ourselves to those, I think, is important.
Okay, so there are no, I know I asked about tabled motions, just no tabled motions, um, old business, anyone?
I just want to just keep it on the radar about the student board member. Keep it on the radar.
I can resend that to you. I did send out to the committee, board members that wanted to be part of that group. What other districts do regarding, there's a spreadsheet out there somewhere that I've sent them.
Legally, yes. We can, we can do it sooner.
After budget thing.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll refresh that and send it back out.
All right. Okay, oh, so that's old business. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda. Is there any questions or comments, items needing to be removed from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can we move the addendum up to the consent agenda as well? All at once and say, moving separately on those two.
Uh, I like that idea, Mister Simons.
I think that's great. We are, we added at, at request of Miss Cannon, we added uh the musical director for golf. As well as to bus drivers today.
Can I just ask a question about personnel? And I, um, this might not be the place on the agenda, but what might be helpful for me is just more of a macro look. At where we are in like a fully staffed district. So we see like we hired two bus drivers, like. How many more do we need? Are are all of our routes covered? Or even the musical director, I see it's for golf, but like just a little bit of like, this is, you know. A replacing a, you know, resignation or somebody who retired. I think just like starting to see a more macro look at our workforce would be really helpful.
Thank you for, for getting these hires pushed through to Miss Cannon. I appreciate you adding to the agenda.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank Dr. McQueen and her staff. I know they've all worked very hard to get them through the driver candidate program. So we appreciate that.
Is there a motion to approve uh? The uh consent agenda, including the addendums, Miss Turner, is there a second? Mister Mann, all in favor? All are in favor, motion passes. New business, anyone? Business? And going on to the last public forum. No, no public forum, board forum is, I'm gonna start on my right, Miss Steinbach.
Well, Dr. McQueen is now here, so I'll just say again that, you know, it was a lovely event um this evening at the Bus um Depot. And uh it was so fun to see all the kids together. So thank you so much for putting that forward. I really appreciate it.
We had eighteen students, well, not yet students, that actually got on the school bus for the very first time.
Um, just again, thanks to Mister Alvie and his staff for hosting us tonight and well wishes to all the teachers tomorrow with those sugared up children.
I just want to say too, when we mentioned earlier about going to the school boards, it was a really good event and there were some good speakers. I do want to recognize that we had a East Roomer student at the divisions table, who McKenna, I don't forget her last name, but she um did an awful job. And she um. Felt like a bright, bright future ahead of her and I think it was a lot of good representation from students. I love that part of the, of the event. And I think we found some more things to buy. And we, you know, appreciate uh the Bella and Turner and our Renaissance folks for hosting.
All right, I'm sitting here, scroll down. Uh, looks like we have an executive session today.
There was an executive session to discuss employment history of individuals and superintendent's contract.
All right, so we need a motion to go into executive session. Is there a second? Miss Turner, all in favor?
I just, we needed to adjourn first.
Okay, we got to adjourn first, okay.